No, I still see you. So down in the bottom left, next to where your microphone is.
Bottom left, microphone, yeah?
To the right of that, there's the button for the camera.
It says stop video.
Okay, so click that.
Video settings. Oh.
Now, there you go.
Okay, thank you.
Can you hear me, Mary?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yepper.
Here I am.
Yepper.
Yepper. Brian. Alex. Jordana. I have a feeling it's gonna be a nice, easy meeting. On the live side.
Uh, no, we got sports to deal with. Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, guys, I just want to give you a heads up that the YouTube livestream has already started.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Chris.
What's up, Brian?
Hey, Jeff, how are you? Hey, Mary. Hey, Scott.
Hi, Brian.
Everybody doing?
Great, how are you?
Good, very good.
Will we have all board members tonight?
That is my understanding. I have not heard from anybody that they're not coming.
Okay.
Hey, Alex.
What's up?
Hi, Alex.
Hi, Mary, how are you?
Great, how are you doing?
Good.
Good.
Jeff, you growing your hair out there?
I'm waiting to get a haircut until I get my second dose of vaccine.
All right.
And then, then a week after that, it'll be cut.
I thought you were doing the same thing, Alex.
That's right, I've been waiting two years, that's all I got.
Hey, everybody.
Hey, Matt, how are you?
How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hey, Brian, I'm gonna switch the order and just do the vaccine update before I do the sports update, just because I think the sports will take a little longer, if that's okay.
Absolutely, no problem.
Yeah.
Let's see, who do we have here so far? We have me, Alex, Susan Schaefer. All right, so we're a few members short.
It's only 6:28.
Hi, Jordana.
Hello.
Hey, Mary, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Hello. Hello to Susan.
Hi, Sue. Okay, so are we excited about the Super Bowl or what?
Of course.
I'm not.
I don't really know how you stop Mahomes.
I'm only concerned about the halftime show, and I had to go look up who it was, because I didn't know who it was, because I'm that old.
All right.
It is recorded, now it's out in the world, Sandy.
Sandy Krul does not look, Sandy Krul does not like football. She is a baseball girl.
So I have it as 6:30, we have four members here, so is there a motion to open the meeting?
So moved.
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
One second. Please vote.
Oh, hold on. Mary, just take mine as an I.
Okay.
Please, thanks. Trying to fix something here.
That's unanimous.
Would you all please join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
For which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Great, we are moving on to item 3.1 of our agenda, public input number one. So if there's anybody from the public that would like to ask a question, make a statement, now would be the time to do it. And you would have three minutes, you can raise your hand, and Mr. Fisher will unmute you, or you can put your question into the chat box. Do we have any hands, Mr. Fisher?
I do not see any.
I do not see any questions in the chat box, so with that, we will move on to item five of our agenda, the superintendent's report, Mr. Nichols.
Thanks, Brian. I have two items, and I'd like to sort of switch the order and start with the vaccine update. And what I have to report is, is not really all that different than what you're reading in the news every day. Suffolk County, the Suffolk County School Superintendent's Association on Friday put out an update basically saying that the county is still finalizing the document that will serve as a step-by-step guide to setting up a point of distribution system. In other words, if the school district wanted to essentially be a site where we could vaccinate others, the Department of Health, Suffolk County Department of Health, is in the process of creating the document that will serve as a roadmap to do that. Having said that, the, the fact that we don't have vaccines available, and that the original estimate of 14 weeks, now without intervention being expanded to seven months to get through 1B, is really shedding some significant doubt on the timing of when those points of distribution could reasonably be set up. So regrettably, I don't really have any significant progress to report on that front, and we remain hopeful that, that things will improve sooner rather than later. So that's the update on the vaccine. Any questions?
Board members, questions for Mr. Nichols? Jeff, how does that timeline, you think, impact, obviously that carries us through this school year? Are we, just, I know we didn't get there yet, we're getting through this year, but that's obviously going to impact your planning and your staff's planning going into the 21, 22 school year as to where we're at with this? Is that, I'm not asking for plans, but that, just so that the public listening, that this is not something that we think is ending in the summer, and in September, we're back to normal?
Yeah, I mean, I, I like to, I'd like to hope that's the case, but until the distribution of the vaccine ramps up, and you're aware that, that President Biden has said the goal is to do, is to get out 100 million vaccines in his first 100 days, if the administration's able to do that, then the picture looks a little better. But, you know, that remains to be seen, so if in fact that doesn't happen, I think your comments about September looking a little different than we had hoped is true.
And, and teachers are now eligible for that, just for the public to know, and do we have a requirement? Is it a requirement or not, just so that the public is made aware of what the, that looks like for them?
So thus far, the first group to be eligible for the vaccine was Group 1A in New York State, and that was basically doctors and emergency workers. So in our school district, that, that included our school nurses and first responders, which are not necessarily in our school district. They then expanded it to 1B, which included teachers and, and school staff, anybody who works in, in the school building and interacts with students. Some of our teachers have been vaccinated, but those who have attempted to make an appointment, it's a hit-or-miss proposition, and because of the lack of vaccines available, it's very, very difficult to get an appointment, so some, some people are making appointments three, four months out. And just this afternoon, I believe, that New York City announced that they're suspending their mass vaccinations due to a lack of supply. So again, hopefully that, that changes in the near intermediate future. And then finally, can we mandate it? At this point, we are not mandating that people get the vaccine. We'd like to think that people on their own would make that decision, given the severity of the, of the virus. But I'm sure there'll be further guidance regarding that as we, as we go forward.
Great, thank you. Any other member, questions from board members or members of the public? You could raise your hand at this point for a question regarding that topic for Mr. Nichols. I do not see any hands, so go ahead, Jeff, continue.
Okay, so the second topic, which I suspect there'll be some, some more discussion on, is with regard to high-risk sports. And so today, the Suffolk County Department of Health, the county executive, Steve Bologna, held a press conference this afternoon, at which time he outlined that effective, I think it's February 1st or February 4th, I'm not sure, that, that escapes me, but effective the 1st to the 4th of February, that high-risk sports, from his, his recommendation, is that they be allowed to run. And the history here is that Governor Cuomo made an announcement within the last week, basically saying that he has decided to make that decision, a decision that rests with the local departments of health. So he removed himself from the, the position of having to say yea or nay with regard to that decision, and put it on the local health departments. So what I'd like to do is to, to provide an overview of, of what was announced today by Steve Bologna, the county executive, then list what I believe to be some significant considerations, and then end with my recommendation to the Board of Education, and then allow time for you to ask any questions. So basically, what Mr. Bologna said today was that, again, in early February, high-risk sports can take place, and those high-risk sports include wrestling, basketball, cheerleading, lacrosse. You, if you have familiarity with those sports, when you think about wrestling, you're talking about people grappling with each other at close range. Basketball, certainly, if you're, you know, you're playing aggressively, you're very close to your opponent. Cheerleading, I'm not as familiar with, but I, I'm also assuming that there's, that there's close contact involved, and certainly in lacrosse as well. So those are the sports that, that were sort of addressed today. Some of the steps that were outlined in his plans, obviously, not obviously, he says that, that players and coaches in these high-risk sports would have to have their temperatures checked prior to games and practices, that masks should be worn whenever possible, especially when they're on the sidelines. What's significant there is that masks would not be worn when students are engaged in an athletic contest. They encourage hand washing and social distancing when not playing. They, they emphasize minimize, to minimize equipment sharing. Coaches are required to maintain logs similar to those that we maintain in classrooms, so that if there is a positive case, we can conduct contact tracing. Outdoor play whenever possible. And something called the Suffolk Community Champion Pledge, which basically lays out expectations for student athletes that when they're not competing, practicing, or playing in an athletic contest, that when they're outside in the community, they have an extra level of responsibility to act appropriately and safely with community wellness in mind. And then probably, at least from the Suffolk County Department of Health's perspective, the most significant element of the plan was weekly testing for high school coaches and athletes. So that was the, pretty much the, the meat and potatoes, if you will, of the announcement today. In terms of the considerations, from, from my perspective, I'd like to start out by pointing that out that the New York State Public High School Athletics Association classified these sports as high-risk for a reason. So that's number one, and that reason is that it carries an increased risk of transmission due to the nature of the sport. Number two, the protections outlined in the Suffolk County Department of Health plan, for the most part, are already in place, and I'm being a little redundant here, but we do temperature check. We do have a questionnaire that, that students fill out every day. We do keep logs. We do encourage social distancing, we do encourage, actually, we mandate mask wearing. So all of these things are in place. The only additional element really today was the testing requirement. And I, when we talk about testing, I, I've said this before publicly, but I think it's important to note that the test that the Suffolk County Department of Health is essentially going to be supplying to schools who opt into this plan is a, is a antigen test. It's a specific antigen test, and the data on it suggests that it really is, is not that valuable in terms of providing data for schools to effectively combat the virus. And I'll just note a few key statistics. In, in 64% of those persons who had symptoms, in other words, if you were displaying symptoms of COVID-19, and you had had a positive test, a positive PCR test, which is the gold standard, in those situations, only 64% of the people tested with an antigen test turned out positive, meaning that 36% did not. In situations where someone had a PCR test that was positive, but they were not showing symptoms, they only picked up 36% of those cases. So it's sort of a myth, from my perspective, that these, these tests are a a reasonable guarantee, if you will, that we're going to be preventing transmission of the virus. And, and my comments are not dissimilar from what, you know, the scientists have been saying at the national level. If you read about the comments from Dr. Fauci and others in and around the holidays, they said that, well, it's great to get a test, but getting a test doesn't diminish the likelihood or the possibility necessarily that you're going to be a spreader if you attend, you know, functions with other people. So I think it's a false sense of security, and it's one of the reasons why in our testing plan, we opted to go with an outside provider and not Suffolk County, because in my eyes, and in science's eyes, the, the PCR test is much more valuable. Another consideration, and, and let me say that I don't, I'm not trying to minimize the work that everybody's put into this. When I say everybody, the Suffolk County Department of Health, or Suffolk County School Superintendent's Association, who endorsed this plan. But I feel as though there's a little bit of virus or COVID fatigue going on, because I don't really think the facts have changed in terms of, of where we're at. And if anything, the, the facts suggest that we're in a worse situation than we were a couple of months ago. And let me make a point about that. In early December, December 1, the Suffolk County test positive rate was 4.2%, the seven-day average. So the seven-day average in Suffolk County was 4.2%, and at that time, a decision was made to only run low and moderate-risk sports. So that's, that's what, roughly two months ago? Now, today, the seven-day average in Suffolk County is 7.2%, 4.2 to 7.2, almost double. And yet, the powers that be, Suffolk County Department of Health, has now decided that it's appropriate to run the same sports that they were holding off on back on December 1. To me, that seems illogical, it doesn't really make a lot of sense. Anecdotally, it's not really anecdotally, it's also a known fact that in Europe right now, because of the, the different strains and mutations that are out there, a lot of the countries are having to impose more stringent lockdowns. A lot of countries are now choosing to close schools, when in fact, originally, they had intended to stay open. And a lot of the research out there supports, or doesn't support, supports closing schools, I guess it does, to the extent that the more we've learned about the virus, the more we know that children who were originally thought to be not efficient transmitters of the virus now have transmission skills, not skills, transmission capabilities congruent with those of adults. So all of those factors, from my perspective, make or shed some significant doubt on the, the wisdom of the recommendation that came out today. And then lastly, we also have, we, meaning the school district, have an obligation to look out for the well-being of our students, but also our faculty and staff. So if we were to opt in as a school district to high-risk sports, then we're increasing the likelihood that our teachers, our TAs, our substitute teachers, our custodians, everyone else in our school is going to be exposed to the virus. And as the superintendent of schools, I've taken a pretty measured approach throughout, and have tried to reference the science to justify a recommendation, which at the end of the day is only a recommendation, you're the Board of Education. But I see no reason to abandon that logic at this point, and my considered opinion is that, that I can't support opting into high-risk sports at this time. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jeff. I think Mr. Bramoff put a comment, just to supplement your report, that reads, "County will supply game day testing for some, game day testing for the student athletes." And I guess just for the public to be aware. Are there any board questions or comments for, for, for Mr. Nichols at this time?
I'll, I'll go first. Hey, Jeff, it's Yorgos. I think there should be a differentiation between like elementary, middle, and high school, because it seems that, you know, when there's infection rate, and especially with sports, because I read about it, it tends to be a higher risk at the high school and maybe middle school level versus the elementary school level.
So the announcement today pertained to, it came from basically the New York State Public High School Athletic Association. So it, it really addressed primarily high school sports. There's some discussion about middle school sports, but it does not address elementary school activities. And what I had said earlier, Yorgos, is the latest research that I've read suggests that the original, or the initial data out there that suggested that children were less likely to be efficient transmitters of the virus has since been questioned and proven to be not necessarily accurate. So I think the lens we apply should be adjusted to start to think that all students can transmit the virus with equal capabilities.
Okay, because I've seen like, you know, I follow what happens in Greece, for example. And you know, yes, they closed the schools, and then they, they introduced like in-class school only for elementary, and now they're going this week, I think, full-time for like, everybody's gonna be like in-person. So, and I think the problems they had in a lot of these European countries is, you know, they had, some of them very low cases, so they just went like free, like the whole summer and like early fall, and that's why they're paying now the consequences, which wasn't the case here, but.
Right. Okay.
Jeff, can you tell me the sports again? It was wrestling, lacrosse, basketball?
And, and cheerleading were the ones that were the. And cheerleading were the ones that were the most, the ones that I saw referenced in the guidance today. But Mr. Bramoff, if you're there, if I, if I left anything out?
Jeff, in terms of lacrosse, it's only boys. Lacrosse is considered high-risk at this time. And girls' lacrosse is considered medium risk, which would be in the same classifications as, say, soccer.
So basically, do we have a number of athletes? Basically, basketball would be our main concern. And that would be, boys and girls?
Sue, from our school district, to offer a basketball season would be roughly, for varsity and JV would be roughly fifty total athletes, coaches, and athletic director, obviously. That would be, that would be in the program for both boys and girls.
I just wanted to know what was the population of the athletes that were involved?
It could go as high as fifty. We could also, it could go as low as below, below twenty-five.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a comment. Can I go, Brian?
Yeah, no, I will, I will speak for you to go. Sorry.
So I, I just want to say I support Jeff's recommendation very strongly. You know, look, we all, we all love our athletics programs, and I think, you know, it's one of the many things that, that has hurt our kids this past year, not being able to play. And it's great for their physical health and their mental health. And we have great programs here that are great for the whole community, but, but we need to look at the big picture. And I, I really don't understand what, how that decision came down at the state level to begin with. Doesn't seem to make any sense to me. But I think you guys have done an amazing job keeping the school open, and that should be our primary focus. And it seems like there, there have been days and weeks throughout the year that we were keeping this open by a thread. And that the, you know, the staffing concerns getting so tight with all the quarantines. It seems like there's new tests every day. And I'd hate to see a situation where we try to open up the sports programs only to have to quickly shut them down and then also having to shut down the school as well because of, of this spreading amongst students and faculty and staff. And so I, I think that opting in would, would be a mistake.
Jeff, I'm sorry, any other board members?
I have a couple of questions. Thank you for that. And I know that the news from Bologna's office just came out today, this afternoon, I think. So it's, this is very new. And this might be from Mr. Bramoff. Do we know why they're saying that you wouldn't, they wouldn't require the students to wear masks during the, during the, the games or the matches?
I can speculate, but I can't give you the exact rationale behind it. I would assume that when someone is competing at a high level of cardiovascular exertion, that the amount of CO2 to oxygen level would be greatly affected. But I cannot tell you with a definitive answer why they are not mandating the masks in play.
Yeah, I'm just asking because it seems like these are, these are competitions where you're going to have student athletes in very, very close proximity, sweating, mouth open, yelling. It just seems counterintuitive that one would think it would be a safe and smart thing to do, to have them in close proximity and do that. It was also interesting to hear that while the boys' lacrosse was considered high-risk, the girls' lacrosse was medium risk. And I think that this might be teeing up a broader question of, you know, what's, you know, are there medium or low-risk sports that need to be considered, whether they are, you know, through the lens that we're discussing now, safe enough? You know, I struggle with this because I know that sports tends to be something that velcroses many of our students to stay engaged in school, and now more than ever, that's hard to do. But I share the concerns already raised and the points that Alex made about, I'm just afraid that the impact this could have on the entire student and population along with our employees would be so negative. And studies, studies have shown that up to ninety percent of kids between thirteen and twenty-one who have COVID are asymptomatic. So if they're asymptomatic and the tests that be given, a lot of the times aren't accurate, then I just feel like we're creating an enormous amount of risk.
My only, my only question of the entire process is the assignment of risk to sports. I think it, at points, it's been rather arbitrary. For example, you know, I don't think there's, I don't believe there's a specific science that could say right now, one sport is more riskier than other, but there's obvious factors. Like wrestling would be considered probably the most extreme high-risk sport. But when you try to delineate from likes, let's say, boys' lacrosse and boys' soccer, I think you may be splitting hairs not to put them all in the same bubble. And the reality is, had no statement came out today about the high-risk sports, we would be moving forward towards a March first, where we would be starting girls' field hockey, soccer, cross-country, what are considered the moderate-risk sports, tennis. And currently, we're running swimming, which is considered a moderate-risk sport, as well as we are running indoor track outdoors. So the only argument that I, that I really don't see the science behind, because obviously, Mr. Nichols has guided our district very efficiently throughout this whole pandemic, is the assignment of high-risk compared to low-risk or immediate risk. I, I think that was rather arbitrarily the way that they assigned them. You know, from a personnel standpoint, I would like to have, be given the challenge to give these juniors and seniors, at the very least, an opportunity to participate in something that is a critical component of their lives. However, I also think that that is my one singular opinion, and I will back the administration and the Board of Education in decisions that are made. So.
Can I ask a question based on that? And I appreciate that you're sharing your perspective. I just want to understand how we think it could be safe to have our students next to each other and facing each other without masks potentially inches apart. And because all of the scientific guidance says that if you're closer than six, maybe even ten feet, if you're not wearing a mask, it can be transmitted. So I'm, you know, particularly if you're indoors, and, you know, I'm assuming basketball would be played indoors, right? So, and that's, I think, what we're teeing up with the high risk tonight. And that's one of them. Cheerleading is another. I, I don't know if we have, we, we have students who are planning on participating, but we've had cheerleaders as part of, for champions teams in the past. But anyway, the, so I'm just trying to understand if we, if we go on science, how, you know, how can we confidently say to our school community that we feel that's a safe decision to make? And I'm not challenging, I'm just trying to understand the process of how we would get to that conclusion.
And, and Chris, I'm not, I'm not a scientist, so I can't answer those questions. However, I can answer this. With the guidelines that came down today, I know that I would be as diligent possible, the director of it, if we were given the opportunity to participate in high-risk sports, I would follow the seventy-plus guidelines that came down from Section 11. And, and I would try to do everything and go above and beyond to keep our students safe. You know, inevitably, the decision is going to rest upon the Board of Education and the superintendent to decide what our best, our best course of action is. And again, I'd like to be given the opportunity. I, I do feel that we are going to see school districts around us that are going to give their students the opportunity. And I can't comment on whether or not I can guarantee anyone's safety because I can tell you, I don't know. I don't know. There's many, obviously, there's many things that I do not know. So it's, I would follow the guidelines and to, to up 10th degree. I just don't, I don't know if I can sit here and tell you that there won't be an increased risk.
Any discussion with the athletes? How do the athletes feel?
Sue, a while back, I, I kind of took a hands-off approach with discussing with the athletes only because I don't want to dangle carrots in front of them. Reality is, you know, no surprise, you have the athletic director here saying that he wants to run sports. So the same will be for my varsity basketball player that wants to play his senior season. You know, our, our viewpoint is, is a little bit narrow-focused. So, you know, I ask that the Board of Education takes a broader look at everything. And, you know, I'm trying to assure the district that I will follow the rules. We will follow the rules, and we will do everything that the governing agencies have put upon us to do. But at the end of the day, I don't know if those rules will make a difference.
Add something. And Mr. Bramoff, I, I think you're fabulous athletic director. I have no doubt that you would follow the rules. But I think Mr. Nichols did a pretty good job of explaining how those guidelines are not very helpful. I also don't see respectfully how you can say it's arbitrary. We know that the increased risk of spread goes up when you're in close contact, when that contact is for a longer period of time, when you're indoors, or when you're breathing heavily. So of course, a sport like basketball is going to be a much higher risk of spread than a sport like swimming, when someone is in a lane by themselves. And so I don't think it's fair to say that this arbitrary, yes, Chris made a really good point. Why is lacrosse for, for boys different than girls? I think there might be individual instances of it, but I think in general, when you're talking about high risk, you're talking about sports where, where people are in very close contact with each other for a longer period of time, indoors, and not wearing masks. And, and that's not arbitrary at all.
And fair enough. And, you know, I believe that's a good point as well. But in terms of specifically in the lacrosse and the world that I live in, there's many people that feel it was highly arbitrary that they classify boys' lacrosse over girls' lacrosse, saying that there's more contact, when in reality is, there's a barrier between most.
Eric, Eric, let me, let me interject because I, I don't want to go on this too long. You've made yourself clear, and you made some good points. Sue, in, in answer to your question about the students, I, I do want to say that there has been a consistent theme, not only with students, but with adults. And I call it COVID fatigue. So there's most definitely students who want to play basketball, and there's most definitely students who want their lives to return to normal, just like there's lots of adults who want their lives to return to normal. You know, people want to get back to what life was like, you know, as, as near as what, what last January, February. But, but, you know, it doesn't change, from my perspective, the charge or the responsibility we have to reference the science and to make decisions based on the science. Because at the end of the day, that's, that's the most valuable reference point we have. It's not emotional. It's based in fact. And so, to the extent possible, although I like to consider the emotions and the demands or the, the requests of, of our constituencies, at the end of the day, I think we got to go back to the science.
Jeff, just a quick one. There's a comment in the chat room from a student. Maybe we should just read this.
So this is from a student who is a junior in high school, and she's trying to get recruited by colleges. And her comment is that the inability to play has greatly impacted her, her, I don't want to say marketability, but the prospects for her to play in college. And I think that's very real. So to the student, you know, I'm really sorry that that's the case. But at the end of the day, it doesn't really change, from my perspective at least, that we have to make decisions based on the science and do our best to try to, to try to seek a middle ground where it doesn't compromise our efforts at establishing a safe environment. I think a perfect example of that is that we have, we, we did something with the school play this year. I think that we have low-to-moderate-risk sports running. And where we can make these decisions that don't result in an increased risk of transmission, I think we've been doing that. But again, I, I think that this recommendation that came down today from the Suffolk County Department of Health, to me, to borrow a term that Chris used, is counterintuitive.
Jeff, can I add?
Just to add to the student's point, as presently constructed, field hockey is a, is a moderate-risk sport. So Madison would be able to participate that come March first. Even though where you're making a recommendation to table the high-risk sports, field hockey is a moderate-risk sport.
And can I just add that as somebody in my previous life that did the college sport of athletics, and I do have friends that are head coaches in the college atmosphere, as well as the US team, they are taking a different approach to recruiting. So I'd ask that student to come reach out to us as advocates to help them through that process.
Thank you, Ms. Carrero.
Jeff, I just have one last question. So just why mandatory the mask while they're playing sports? That's not enough, you think?
Well, I don't think it's enough. No, I think that, that the mask would, you know, unless they're N95 masks, and then even then, when you're playing a physical sport, you know, they're going to be dislodged and moved around. And the science of masks is that the, the most significant part of its effectiveness is really the fit. So if that's not firmly attached and you're moving around, I think that, that, you know, that's of limited value. And then secondly, it would be hard, you know, we can't, as a district, mandate what other schools do. So even if we were to wear masks, we'd be, you know, competing against other schools that would not be wearing masks.
So let me, let me ask you, so if we make this decision, is this like for the, the whole calendar year? Or is it something we can reexamine in a couple of months?
I think it's something that, as with everything that we've dealt with, it's, you know, we revisit and adjust as needed. So, you know, if two months from now, you know, vaccines are widely distributed and the infection rate, you know, falls significantly, and there's a decreased risk of transmission, then, you know, certainly, we, we can revisit it. But, you know, I think, I think, again, we go back to what the facts are and what the conditions on the ground are at the time of the decision.
Well, we can see the other school districts that they're going to allow the sports, see what's the infection rate and everything else from those sports. And then I guess that's something we can monitor within, like, every month? And reevaluate.
Yes. Yep.
I just, I, I just want to add, add a, add a couple of thoughts because, yeah, I came on, I came on to the meeting tonight, asking who watched the Super Bowl. That was my first question. So obviously, you know, sports, I think, is really important for kids and human beings as a whole. Thirty days ago, they told us we couldn't have ten people at our house. Thirty days later, they tell us that we can put ten kids on a basketball court and let them sweat all over each other. And I have believed that the district has led us through science. And science is just not making sense right now. But I hope everybody here realizes that the kids who participate on our athletic teams are already playing at other venues on a regular basis. And that's basketball pickup games, that's field hockey, that's soccer, that's baseball. Baseball went through all summer and all fall. But I do have to say that we do have a responsibility to people even other than the athletes, such as the staff and, you know, all the teachers and administrators, et cetera. So this is a really tough one for me. I love Eric's enthusiasm. I love what he's saying. And I agree that I think if we did it, he would follow the, the guidelines to the law. But I need at least another thirty days to have the numbers stay consistent and going in the direction that they're going to be able to support it. But in hindsight, we just do need to know that kids are already doing this stuff without any guidelines or any precautions. So it is happening out there every single day. So this is a tough one, guys. This is harder than even opening school for me, almost.
Any other members of the board? Thank you, Sandy.
Brian, what's the process in which this decision gets made then? Are, are, is there a formal vote or just kind of, you know, reading the room?
My understanding in reading the legislation is it's the, the decision is up to the superintendent. And Mr. Nichols has asked us for input in making that determination.
Got it. So we don't have to have a vote?
Not, that is my understanding.
Terrific. Thanks.
And I, I, I agree with you, Jeff, that the science doesn't support it. And we have to, as much as it hurts to not let athletics go forward right now, in my mind, we have a responsibility to everyone in the school and the community. So it just doesn't seem like there's evidence of that there now, where we can do that comfortably, is, is, is my thought.
Oh, sorry.
It's not easy. No, I, we agree with you, Sandy. I think everybody's in agreement. So.
Half of these kids.
I think you have thoughts of the board, Jeff. I would open it up now to the public, though, if there's any. I would open it up now to the public, though, if there's anybody else that wanted to weigh in on this conversation at this time, please raise your hand or put your question into the chat room.
There are no hands up right now.
And I don't see any other questions in the chat room. Okay. So with that, we will, unless there's anything else from the board, we'll move on to the item 6.1, the principal's report.
So you want to start, Ms. Carrier?
Thank you, guys. So we've been working hard at the middle high school. We're starting to get ready for next year. Our students, grade six through 12, has started the process for our course selection, especially in the high school. This helps us understand how many sections of each each course, especially at the high school level that we need to run. Our school counselors have been working really hard on that. We've continued our grade team and our mental health initiative through our PPS staff and meet weekly to discuss concerns regarding our students and also initiatives that we might need to put in place to make sure that we can make this pandemic year the best we can in a really hard situation. The middle school, the week before break, will be doing some type of compassionate whaler wars. Ms. Westhoff is in charge of that. And the high school will be doing something similar. And those points will be used for our annual whaler day that might need to be looked a little differently, but we're going to be creative about it. We started meeting with the high middle high school musical staff to figure out how we can do it. There's a teeny awards meeting next week that our director is going to be attending. And then the week following, we're going to meet again to plan. This might mean pushing back the date, maybe being creative and thinking of an outdoor performance. But we're trying to put all out on the table to make sure that we have the safe environment for our kids at a social distance right now, and then we'll abide by the science. And I think that's about it at the middle high school.
Mr. Malone?
Thanks, Mr. Nichols. Good evening, everyone. Since I, since I actually was, I was attending a separate meeting two weeks ago, I I didn't have a chance to just commend the the staff on the way they handled the week upon which our we returned from break, our our week where we went remote. I thought everyone did a fabulous job and and that has continued when we've need to needed to send some classes home as per quarantining regulations. I think from the teachers and staff members, of course, to the students and the parents, the the efforts deserve being commended. I think things have gone as well as could be expected. What I'd like to do is actually invite Ms. Ray Noso to just provide an update on something real significant that was shared with the faculty two weeks ago and is now being shared with the students. And this is an outgrowth of a lot of the work that she does as a co-chair of our diversity and inclusion committee and here in our district and all the work that's come out of that committee related to literature in our classrooms.
Thanks, Mr. Malone. I would love to share with you something that's taken place at the elementary school. And that is an offset of the subcommittee, which is the diversity and inclusion classroom libraries that was organized. We were hard at work last year, last school year during the springtime, organizing books that we received as part of our collaboration with John Germain Library. There was private funds that were allocated for the purchase of diversity and inclusive books. This came from a questionnaire that was sent out to our elementary school teachers asking what they felt that their own classroom libraries were lacking in terms of diversity and inclusion. And from that, paired with John Germain Library and the Subcommittee of Diversity and Inclusion, we were able to put together a bullet list of items that we felt could be used in our own school for distribution. So the way that was originally going to take form was for the class, the the books to be available for students to take out on their own through our reading library, the reading library or through their own classroom. Fast forward to coronavirus, now we had to modify that in a way that book bins were put together with the help of two teacher assistants, Denise Roloff and Sharona Evgen put together bins for each individual class library. So each class received their own set of diversity and inclusive books. And last faculty meeting, I was able to share with them that that was going to be distributed. So all the classes in our school now have their own personal set. And the way that's going to be distributed is they'll have them for a few weeks. They were instructed that it's for their own classroom, only for the teachers to use to read and share with their students. So the books are not being sent home. The students are not handling the books or touching the books. The teachers are the ones that are sharing them with their students as a read aloud. And then for elaboration in terms of conversation and dialogue that they could have through that. So the classrooms will have their own set for a couple of weeks. Then they'll be sent back to the reading room where they'll be sanitized, sprayed down, they'll sit for a while before they are recirculated. But it was really exciting and the feedback already from the teachers has been so positive and so tremendous about the conversations that they are already starting to have around these books. I was able to share a book with our faculty that I read to all of the the faculty members. And that was a book titled Bunny Bear. And it's it's for like a first or second grade class. And Bunny Bear is about a bear who is having identity issues, hence the name Bunny Bear. So it's a bear that identifies more with being a bunny and his journey and how that was received with his bear friends and bear family. And how he was able to find friends in his circle and celebrate his differences along with others. And it was, it was so wonderful. And like I said, it was just really well received. So our next step from that is to circulate a survey to the middle high school teachers to ask where they feel they may be lacking in terms of their own personal library and getting that out there, hopefully for for their use as well, you know, obviously age and grade level appropriate. So. Thank you. Any questions for me?
Sounds like a good program. So what's the next steps in the program?
So we're going to circulate a survey now to the middle high school teachers to ask where they feel their own personal classroom library might be lacking. And then from there, we'll again put together a list of age appropriate, grade appropriate books. And our hope is for that same private donor who donated through John Germain Library will again put the funds for purchase for middle high school books. And I can tell you, having having spoken to Catherine Creedon, she did say that the donor would probably be looking in the future to see where our school will pick up the slack moving forward, because obviously this isn't something that they could just keep doing every single year. They are hoping that eventually the school matches the funds that they they put in.
Out of curiosity.
Just put that out there.
Out of curiosity, if you know, what what is the program cost? Just if someone else is watching or listening, or if you're not, if you guys don't have that, we could do.
I don't have that number, but I can tell you, it was probably, Mr. Malone, would you say about 150 books, if not more, were purchased? And they were hardcover, softcover.
Yeah, I would say more and each book's typically 20, 20 or more. So you could do the math with that.
Yeah. And and some of the books were also purchased in English and Spanish when they were available.
Yeah, it was a very generous gift and we really appreciate it, truly.
For our town.
Thanks, Ms. Ray Nosa.
My pleasure.
Good, Mr. Nichols.
All right, thanks. Brian, is it okay if we move forward with Ms. Bouchami talking about the budget?
Yes, I I think there was no other update on testing or anything, right? We weren't, we were, we covered everything. Okay. Very good. Yes, that'd be great, Ms. Bouchami.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Let me start sharing my screen with you and grabbing my presentation. Okay. So tonight, we're going to go through the salaries and employee benefits part of the budget, which is the largest part of the budget. And we worked very hard on it. And we're still very early in the budget process, so things may change along the way. I know that the worksheets that the board did get last Friday and the presentation you received today, I actually did make another change to that. So as I'm talking, you'll see that the number for the state retirement costs, I was able to go back into that account code, look at additional projections, and I was able to reduce that line by another $54,400. So that's why my percentages in the presentation may not exactly match what you see in your presentation. So tonight, we're going to just familiarize everyone with the current year. So the current year budget right now is $44,332,423. And our current year salary budget is $24,49,107. Employee benefits are $10,660,610. And currently, employee benefits and salaries make up 78% of our current year budget. So next year, what we did was, the budget is very tight. The levy growth factor this year is only 1.23%, which means our tax levy increase or our tax cap is going to be very low. This 1.23% levy growth factor is the lowest it's been in five years. This is what everyone calls the 2%, but of course, it has not been 2% for for numerous years throughout since the tax cap has begun in 2011, 12.
Jennifer, could, so. Not to cut you off, can you just explain just briefly, because of the public watching, what that the levy is and the tax cap is, just for people observing?
Well, we're going to present our tax cap calculation, which is basically the maximum amount that we can raise in taxes without having a super majority vote on the budget. So in the current year, the, I believe, the tax cap actually came out to 3.1% for the current year. And then the district went out and raised raised the tax levy 2.7%. So the 2.7% was was what the district raised in tax levy. But the tax levy is not the only thing that supports the budget. We also have state aid that supports the budget. And we have other revenues that come in throughout the year. So the levy growth factor is a component of the tax cap calculation. And it's based on the inflation rate, so the inflation factor for last year. And everyone was predicting that the inflation rate would be low. This is due mostly because of COVID. And the inflation factor, which has been 2% or higher the past two years, came in at 1.23%. So that is a very large factor in our calculation. And this is why we know right off the bat that the budget is going to be extremely tight. And we are going to have to cut costs or maintain the same level of services with the same cost going forward.
Thank you.
When we, oh, you're welcome. When we reviewed salaries, we actually went through every salary line and looked at where are projections, how, what our actual spending was and how reasonable our projections were. So I can say that right now, we are looking at a very slight increase in salaries. Our our salaries are basically remaining flat and they're only increasing right now by $1,841. And we'll look a little closer at it on the next slide. Employee benefits are, we are projecting them that they're going up $413,000. So our employee benefits are going up a little bit more. So overall salaries, employee benefits are projected to increase about by $415,000, which is a 1.4% increase to the current year tax levy. So the salary projections were developed and are based on the following. Every employee receive, who who is entitled to receive a contractual step in salary increase is is built into the budget according to their current contracts. For all employees who do not have a board approved salary for next year, their current salary was rolled forward with contingency built in into the budget for future salary adjustments. Co-curricular and athletic stipends are based on the current Teachers Association of Sag Harbor contract with funds added for additional appointments made during the year. Substitutes, extra pay, overtime, lane changes, changes in assignments, they were all reviewed and they're based on historical spending trends. All current one-year COVID-19 temporary appointments are not included in the budget next year, but contingency is built into the budget to replace all the employees who retired at June 30th, 2020. So we are hopeful that things are relatively back to normal next year. And we're going to show you why we're not projecting a large increase in in salaries. And the reason is really because of retirements that occurred at the end of June 30th, 2020, that were not factored in the current year budget, because the current year budget, of course, was approved and developed way before then. So if you look at the chart, the chart describes, it's sorted by department, so salaries summarized by department. And they're sorted, running from the highest to the lowest projected expense. You also can see the 2020 current year budget and what we've spent so far in the current year budget with expenses as of last Friday. So this is expenditures for the current year as of January 22nd. And then you have the 1920 budget and 1920 expenditures. And 1920 even was not your typical school year because the schools shut down around March 16th, March 17th. And this meant that even though all of our contract employees were paid, we still were not paying all of those extra pays. We weren't paying extra overtime costs, extra pays. We weren't paying for the clubs and stipends that we normally would pay. So that isn't even your typical year. But you could see the difference between your budget to actual for 1920. You could see how things are trending for the current school year. So we're projecting really salaries to remain flat. Our instruction and special education budget really have to be looked at together. The way we project the salaries is based on where everyone is working this year. So we had a couple of teachers who were normally special ed teachers now teaching general ed. So that's why our special education, you know, staff is not getting reduced. They're just right now teaching general ed and going forward into September. If they move back into special ed, we'll go ahead and transfer funds into special ed. And we normally do a salary reconciliation a few times during the year just to make sure that all of the budget codes are actually matching where everyone actually ends up landing in September because we don't necessarily know where TAs are going to be working and which department, which grade levels right now. So what happened was is at June 30th, 2020, we did have we did have 11 staff members retire. So that was made up of eight teachers and three teaching assistants. Those 11 teachers and TAs, their salaries came out to a little under $1.3 million. We replaced the TAs and we replaced four of those teachers. And their replacement costs came out to about $380,000. So there was a huge savings because we didn't replace all of the teachers and because of the salary differential between your top paid retiree leaving the district and someone new stepping in. And this is sometimes why districts offer retirement incentives, because there is a huge cost savings between between the two. So we left enough money, funds in the budget for all of those teachers to be replaced. Because what happened was this year is, the reason why they weren't replaced was because we had a lot of those one-year COVID appointments. And the temporary COVID appointments were actually replacing some of those retired teachers. Next year, we don't anticipate having all of those one-year temporary appointments. But there is enough money in the budget if the district has to go one way or the other. So there is contingency built in for new hires or if we do need to keep our one-year appointments a little bit longer. So going down the list, our facilities budget is really remaining flat. And our supervision and building administration and our central administration, both of those areas were restructured. So you see, there is a $141,000 decrease in the supervision and building administration line and a $75,000 increase in the central administration line. Transportation, um, is going up slightly, a little less than fifty thousand dollars. And then all of the other budget codes for co-curricular activities, central data processing, computer assisted instruction, interscholastic activities and security, they're all going down slightly. So the reason why we were able to keep salaries flat was mainly because of the savings that we were able to, um, that we were able to budget in this year's budget because of those retirees that had left on June thirtieth. Does anyone have any questions on salaries before we start talking about employee benefits?
Members of the board?
I just had a, a quick question and if you don't have the information in front of you, can you estimate just approximately how much all of the one-year appointments are costing us per year?
Uh, let me think. Let me see what I have here. Do I have it broken down?
And if you can get back to me on it, it was just something that as I'm looking at this and we're putting contingency in in case we need it again, it's just helpful to kind of know what, just approximately what that number is, but I don't need to know.
Yeah, I can get back to you on that because my spreadsheet I have actually includes everything. Leave replacements and, um, also teaching assistance. And so what I'll do is I'll break those numbers out for you and I'll send those out.
Great, thanks.
Hey Jennifer, it's Yorgos. What's the main reason driving the increase in the benefits, the four hundred and something thousand?
So benefits, um, really we, we're breaking down benefits into like health insurance. What's related to health insurance is health insurance opt-outs and also Medicare reimbursements. So if you look at this chart, which is, um, really shows you budget to actual for the current year, the same as the previous slide did, and also your nineteen twenty budget and your nineteen twenty expenditures. You can see our largest increases are in the health insurance opt-out line, which is a hundred and two thousand, five hundred and fifty-three. And then we also have an increase for compensated absences. So, but if you see our health insurance budget, our health insurance budget is actually declining slightly. So we'll talk about health insurance first. So this is our health insurance rates going back since, since nineteen ninety-seven and you could see the huge swings. I mean, they've increased, they've decreased. For twenty twenty-one, we're seeing that our increase is only four point, uh, one seven percent for an individual plan. It's a little under three percent for a family plan. So what we did was we, we looked at everybody who were paying health insurance for, we looked at all of our active employees, our retirees. We looked at all of our, we have some employees who receive health benefits under the Affordable Care Act. Um, and we also built in some contingency for new hires and we, and status changes. And we were able to keep that budget line flat. But the health insurance opt-out budget actually is going up and it's going up significantly by a hundred thousand dollars. And a lot of that is because a lot of the new hires were actually, are younger and they're not buying into a plan and a lot of them are still covered by their, um, their family's plan. So we actually broke out that, that three hundred and forty-five thousand dollar expense in, uh, health insurance opt-outs would potentially cost us over a million dollars if all of those employees actually decided to, to take our health insurance. So that, that does save us a lot of money. But that is part of that increase, that four hundred and thirteen thousand dollar increase. And you could see the other increases, compensated absences. There's an increase and I'm going to talk about that a little more detail later. And then we have increases in our retirement system line. So teachers retirement system and our employee retirement system are both increasing, um, by eighty-six thousand and sixty-eight thousand. So that's what makes up the four hundred and thirteen, but getting back to, um, health insurance, we also are pay out a Medicare reimbursement to retirees. And, uh, this reimbursement is, they, they actually pay a portion of their social security is withheld to pay a portion of their Medicare and we reimburse them back that portion. And, um, that's going up slightly, we're projecting by twenty thousand dollars. The retirement system, both, the rates are going up, um, for both systems. So the current employer contribution rate for TRS is nine point five three percent and that's going up to ten percent next year, which is roughly a four point nine percent increase in rate. And you'll see our TRS budget did increase close to that. So it's increasing by eighty-six thousand dollars, which is a four point six percent rough, rough increase. The employer retirement set, system is what I talked about before we did the presentation. We went back, we did some more projections, we calculated, you know, what each employee at different tiers would be paying, what we would be paying for them for next year. And we were able to bring this down a little bit from the worksheet I sent you on Friday. So the ERS, uh, contribution rate currently is fourteen point six percent. So we have to pay fourteen point six percent of, of all salaries into the system for our current non-instructional employees. And next year, the rate is going up to sixteen point two percent. So this is really a, a little less than eleven percent increase in rate for us. And that coupled with increase in salaries for us, that equates to a sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollar increase in employee retirement system costs, um, which is a little bit higher than the actual rate increase. So the other areas that are increasing slightly would be social security and, um, that increase is twenty-five thousand dollars and it's basically tied to the social security maximum contribution going up from year to year. Um, our dental insurance right now is projected to increase two percent. We don't have our final rates, but, um, based on trend, we feel that two percent is, is, we're comfortable at two percent right now. Our increase in compensated absences is based on projecting the maximum benefit per employee as per their contract and looking at actual spending. So compensated absences, um, is increasing by eighty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars. And this is money that we pay to employees at the end of the year. If they have any sick leave, uh, some employees, uh, can actually sell back their sick leave or their vacation leave back to us. And you can see the prior year in nineteen twenty, uh, the district only budgeted a hundred and seventy-five thousand, but they paid out two hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars. This year, we're budgeting a hundred and seventy-five thousand also, which we feel may be a little low. And, um, so next year we're bringing that number up and we're projecting based on the maximum benefit. This, this line actually does save us money too, um, in sub costs. So if, um, employees are using their sick, less sick leave, then you know, then we're actually having less subs have to come into the building. Workers' compensation are, we're projecting that's declined slightly. Unemployment insurance, we are looking to increase this by forty-five thousand and that is really because of, of trend and what we've been spending. If you look at our nineteen twenty expenditures for unemployment, we budgeted fifteen thousand, we spent forty-five, nine thirty-four. In the current year, only until January, we've already spent fifty-six thousand, one seventy-one. And that really is COVID related also because as I said, even though we were paying all of our contract employees, there were a lot of employees, subs, for instance, that weren't getting paid and they were actually entitled to unemployment insurance. So, um, that's why those costs have gone up. And we are projecting a slight decrease in our disability insurance costs and we're basing that on actual spending also. So does anyone have any, uh, questions about our employee benefits budget? What are projecting next year?
You just tell us why the unemployment, I'm sorry, the number went up, you just, um.
Unemployment insurance?
I do want to point this out too, as to why you don't see some expenditures for some items. You see that they're zeroed out and it's because a lot of these costs are spent at the end of the year. So a lot of these, um, bills for the teacher retirement system, we, that gets spent at the end of the year. The health insurance opt-outs are paid out at the end of the year. Compensated absences are also paid out at the end of the year. So that's why, um, that column does look a little lower. Is there any other questions?
Board questions?
Where's the ERS?
So ERS is state retirement. So that's the employee retirement system for all of our non-instructional staff. So all of our instructional staff, they're in the teachers retirement system and, um, we're at just a state retirement. That's all of our non-instructional staff.
And that's up twelve.
A part of that, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And that's going up and that, that actually, uh, was reduced from what I originally sent you. And that's based on our projected bill and just looking at each employee and seeing what tier they're at because, um, of course, you know, we're paying, uh, a lot less for a tier, a lot less for a tier six employee than we are paying for a tier four employee.
Right.
So this is really the, you know, the biggest part of our budget. And because we have, um, we are going to have such a low tax cap increase, um, next year, we really did try to control costs as much as possible. We are going to continue to do that throughout the whole budget development process. If there are any changes made to any of these projections based on additional information that comes in from now until the budget is adopted in April, we're going to update, um, you at every meeting on any changes. The next meeting, which is scheduled for, uh, February fifth, it's right around the corner. We're going to start talking about all of our revenue projections. So we'll start talking about, um, what, what our state aid projections look like, what our tax levy limit is. Um, we're going to be looking at all of our tuition and shared service revenue. We're going to start looking at that, start projecting those. We're also going to, on the expenditure side, we'll go through all of the board of education, um, budget lines, the central administration budget lines. We'll review facilities, technology and transportation. So we're doing this at a very fast pace upfront so that we have a lot of time towards the end to really review the entire budget. Then the next meeting on March first, we're going to talk, we're going to have more specific information on what the tax levy limit is and what the tax levy impact is going to be for both towns. And we'll go through all of the instructional budgets for the elementary school, for the learning center, the middle high school. Um, and then from there, we're just going to fine tune and we're just going to, you know, go ahead and make any changes and adjustments as necessary moving forward.
Board questions for Ms. Bishemi?
I just have one. First of all, uh, thank you so much. That was an excellent presentation and the level of detail and clarity is, is really appreciated. So thank you very much, Jennifer. You referenced at the next meeting, you were going to go through revenue. When we do that, could we also get, and this may come from you or another administrator, but if we could get an update on the new students that we have in the district or additional students and then uh, how many are, um, tuition paying and what we project? Just because when we started the year, we had a big influx. So, you know, now that we're kind of in the middle of the year, it would be good to reflect on that and see, did we keep most of those students? Did some go back to the city or somewhere else? Just to, you know, take the temperature.
I'm going to include all of that.
All right, terrific. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Great. Thank you so much, Jennifer.
You're welcome.
Uh, moving on to item seven point one on the agenda. I'm sorry, Jeff.
I gotta stop sharing this screen, right? Do I do that?
You.
Okay, you're welcome.
Job, nice, clean, neat, easy read. Thank you.
Welcome.
And anything you wish to add at this point, Mr. Nichols, before we move on to seven point one? Okay, item seven point one, is there a motion to approve the first reading of new policy five, six, seven, zero, records management?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, um, is this a new position, a new hire position, a new position we're throwing out there for someone to apply for?
The item, the policy item, Susan, seven point one?
Is it the records management? Yeah, it's to, yes.
The first reading of the policy.
Yes, it was to appoint someone, correct?
No.
It, it doesn't appoint somebody, create, it makes, so we're not appointing anyone into the position. It's a policy saying you have to have a records management officer, which I believe this is just updated version of an older policy.
So we already have a records management person?
That, that would be me.
Yeah. Okay, that was my question. Okay, thank you.
And I could speak to that if anybody had any other further questions.
No, I'm good.
My question just is, what is the difference between this policy and the old policy?
Dr. Mears?
Yeah, so the policy in our, our, uh, our current manual, um, hasn't been updated in over fifteen years. So I didn't even review the old policy. We're going to accept the recommended policy from Erie One Bosse's. We've already met and reviewed it through the, uh, policy committee.
Terrific, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Mears. Any other questions from the board? Okay, Mary, if you please open up the voting.
Okay. That's unanimous?
Thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda items, is there a motion for consent agenda items eight point two through eight point one four?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Mary, I'd ask that you open up the voting. Thank you.
That's unanimous?
Great, thank you. Moving on to item ten point one, is there a transportation committee report?
Yes, um, that would be from myself and, um, Yorgos is also a member of the committee. So Mr. Sabiridis, if there's anything you'd like to add, please do. But our committee met last week, we received a brief update from our transportation director, Maude Stevens, and we appreciated that. And then secondly, um, the board may remember that probably this time last year, we, um, updated the school board on some of the work that the committee had been doing kind of in general on safe routes to and from school specifically as a group. We have been taking a close look at the sidewalks that, uh, border both of the campuses and now, now the three campuses here in our district. As time has gone on and our attention has been diverted, we, um, wanted to reach back out to the village of Sec Harbor who had helped us with some of our discussions and, um, the mayor, um, the new mayor, Mayor Mulcahy and Chief McGuire had attended and talked at some of our meetings. Um, so we reached back out. We were very happy to welcome Mayor Mulcahy to our meeting and she was able to provide our group with a brief update on the, um, parking plan that the village is pursuing. Many have probably read about it in the local papers in the past few weeks. This is the, um, parking on Main Street and on the wharf for, for the approaching summer. What was exciting for the group to hear is that, um, right now the plans are that proceeds from that parking plan will be focused on sidewalk construction, repair with, with really a focus on increasing safe walking routes around the schools, um, from the schools and to different points of interest in our village, like the park, John Jermaine Library, the village. So as a committee that, you know, it was great to receive that report. We were again happy to share some of the work that we've been doing. But as a group, before we, um, continue any of these conversations, the group just wanted to make sure that the board of ed is, um, still in a place of comfort with us being a part of these conversations. You know, as a group, we believe that these, um, sidewalk improvements are needed for our, our campuses. We think, um, we've gone without these for a long time. But before we proceed, we just wanted to get the feedback from the board of ed. We don't know exactly where all these discussions are going to go. Um, we don't know exactly where all these discussions are going to go. But um but that's where we're at.
Great, thank you, Matt.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
Um, thank you for that and thanks for the documents, the uh which are really helpful and also the committee meeting notes. Um, at this point, um, what do you see the role of the district in the discussions with the group about their focus on the paid parking and the sidewalk repairs? Like, what role does the committee play in that ongoing discussion from this point forward?
I think right now our committee would really just be sort of sharing our wish lists, so to speak, if asked. If the village, if this program is something that the village pursues and it's successful, um, those revenues, if they are earmarked for for these projects such as sidewalk development or improvements. And then we, as a committee, are asked to share our our thoughts. We we would love to do that. I know, for example, um, you know, if you look on those maps that were shared, there's some, there's some obvious areas where sidewalks never were constructed and they're missing, you know, around the schools. So if this project is successful, we'd um we'd love to share that information with the village.
And Matt, I just wanted to add, I mean, for me, it was like one of the first meetings I attended. And I mean, it's, it was really great work that the committee was doing. But uh I realize how low the budget of the village is for sidewalks and street cleaning and everything else. I didn't know it was only like forty thousand dollars and that was to take care of like cleaning, of like repairing the sidewalks and everything. So they're hoping by adding all this revenue from the paid parking, they're going to have like a substantial budget, maybe closer to a million, hopefully, um, which then they can allocate and do all that work. And the mayor seemed very committed, like to get the input from the school, addressing those like um uh sidewalk improvements. So so it seems like, you know, it's going to be a great relationship with the village.
Member questions?
Sounds exciting.
I think it's a great project if we get more sidewalks in the village, but I think funding has historically been an issue and um, I would say I'm hopeful that the new plan raises revenue. But with the pandemic and other things, I think it's unlike an unlike reality. But I think we should pursue other avenues to see if there's, if there's any way to make that happen.
Okay.
But I I'm for you guys pursuing that um with the village, with the state, however we can do. I think it, I think it's great. I think it's a, it's a challenge to take on this year with the way of the world. But I do think if we could do it, it would be of great benefit to the school and the community.
Okay.
And just to add, I think the timing is that they're going to go through the summer. And I think towards like the fall is when they're going to decide how much money they have to allocate towards this project.
Correct.
Any other members wish to weigh in on this? Okay, thank you very much. You know, uh, where you stand, sounds like you have support to move forward.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, public input number two, is there anybody here for public input number two? Um, wishes to ask a question, state a position or anything in the middle? Uh, now would be the time to raise your hand or put your question into the chat room. I see.
There is a question in the chat.
I see one question in the chat. Uh, Jeff, do you want to read it or just address it if you can at this point? Did we lose Jeff?
No, he's not, he's muted.
Oh.
I'll uh, I'll read it, Brian, and then I'll turn it over to Ms. Carriero. So the question is, is it possible to have students choose to eat lunch outside to decrease risk of unmasked COVID exposure if weather permits?
So absolutely, um, the weather has been much colder the past, just a little bit. So um, we have not been having students outside just because not every student, even though they might um not have the ability to have coats. So we want to make sure that they're warm while eating. Um, but we are making sure that people are um going outside as much as possible with mask breaks as well as during the lunch period. But we can, administration can remind our lunch monitors um about making sure to eat outside as much as possible. That's why all those circles are in the backyard and the front yard.
You know, can I ask a question about that? So does an individual student have the option to do that if they want to?
If they want to, we can definitely discuss that. Um, it's, the hard part is because of the way the lunch schedule is. I believe we have over twenty lunch monitors. Usually it's only about twelve for the entire year because of the three different lunch periods. And also people's different COVID level. But we, I can work with administration to make sure that we have students that want to go outside, um, have a supervisor for that. Because it definitely will make a lot of students feel more comfortable.
If it's possible to do, it seems like that would be a good, just to give kid, the kids who want to do that, to give them the option.
Absolutely.
Creating staffing problems.
I agree.
I think we can figure it out.
Okay, and Brian, we do have one hand up?
Sure.
Okay, so it is. All right, hold on one second. Uh, Tom, you can go ahead.
Hi, everybody.
Hey, Tom, can you hear me? We can.
Tom, if you can. Name, not your address, and you have three minutes.
Thomas McElhan, Sag Harbor. Um, yeah, I hope everybody's doing well. I we, I really miss the whole community feel. Um, and just to go back to the sports, I know Mr. Nichols is a quite an athletic supporter, you know, himself and, you know, loves sports. And these decisions are not taken lightly. And one of the reasons that our son is staying remote, because there's still uh, there's evidence out there that it can be long lasting um health effects on 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 young on young kids. Um, and just to help Eric out, you know, those NR ninety five masks are no, you know, with the oxygen and carbon levels, they actually can induce strokes. So that's a scientific fact. But the question I have uh is, uh, Mr. Nichols? Um, I, I really, I'm really behind you on that decision not to have uh the winter sports. But I found it just not, not disturbing, but my, my eyes perked up when uh you have the medium sports season starting on March first. And somebody said, uh, I don't know who said it in the meeting. Um, can we revisit that in a month? And I would like to know if there's a way that we could be a little more proactive um for the spring season. Now, a month seems like a long time. Uh, spring season's only five weeks away.
Yeah, um, so thanks, Tom. Um, can you hear me? Am I unmuted?
Yes.
Okay.
Very well.
So um, maybe I didn't, I probably didn't do a good job of articulating um what it is that I intend to do, which is really to monitor the conditions on the ground in lifetime. Um, so right now, um, with the low to moderate risk sports, uh, the plan is to run those and and I don't anticipate that changing unless the conditions on the ground uh worsen significantly. And when I was um answering Yorgos's question, I I think uh Yorgos was asking, you know, the decision or the recommendation you're making this evening to not go with uh high risk sports, is that something that we can revisit moving forward should the conditions change? And my response to him was, yeah, most certainly we can do that. Uh, and that's my intent, because if the, if the test positive rate, which is now the seven day average in the low sevens, you know, in in March uh or in in even the end of February is down, you know, at two or three percent, then we can revisit uh some of the decisions or recommendations that we made this evening. Um, so that's, that's pretty much what I was trying to say. And and it's something that we're evaluating day in and day out, week in and week out.
Yeah, and and Tom, just, just to be clear for the public, um, the decision lies with with our superintendent. So we don't have to wait for a meeting. We don't have to wait, you know, for a vote. If the, if the science changes to be of of a benefit, um, we we can then act on that in in a, in a fluid, quicker way. Should that, should that be the case? And and that, and that, that's the hope that we can get sports going. But um it's not something that we're locked into in terms of, you know, fixed meetings or deadlines. We're able to move on it if if the um numbers are low and then if it's a, if it's a safe thing for the district to engage in.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you for all the hard work, too. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other hands, Scott, or questions?
No.
Okay. Um, then we move on to item thirteen point one of the agenda. Is there a motion to convene into executive session to discuss contract one, a contract issue two, litigation matters three, potential real property acquisition by school?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
No, that's good. Yorgos got it.
Very good. Mary, please open up the voting.
Oh. Hold on, Mary, I'm coming.
That's unanimous.
Great, thank you. Just before we sign off, so the public knows, um, the the board has voted. We'll be going into executive session. When we come out of executive session, it'll be for the sole purpose of ending the public meeting. No votes or action will be taken by the board or discussions had, um, so no one will miss anything. Uh, and with that, uh, everyone have a good evening. Board members, there's a link in your mail uh to join the executive session. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.